Call the meeting of the Waco City Council on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order at three oh one P. M. Welcome everybody to the Boski Theater. Welcome everybody in the gallery here today down on the in beautiful downtown Waco. And also welcome to all the viewers at home on the Waco City Cable Channel. Looking forward to a great meeting today. We'll start the meeting out with a moment of silence. Please join me. Okay, thank you for that. We will start the meeting out today with all members are present here today. This is great. Everybody's here. All the council members are at the meeting this afternoon. The first thing we get through is the recognition of work session speakers. Is there anyone present here today who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing no one is registered to speak, we'll now recess the regular session and convene into work session with a report from the city manager. And today we have Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson. Welcome here today. Appreciate you being here. You're going to give us a report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Awesome. So there are no changes to the agenda today. There is a special motion language for you at your places for Resolutions nine thirty-nine and nine forty-three. I have a couple of recognitions I'd like to do today and a couple of items I would like to highlight on the agenda. And so first we'll start with the employee recognitions. And today I am glad to introduce to you Colin Booth, our new Managing Director of Finance. He joined us in Waco last week, but this is not but this is not his first time working for the city of Waco. Colin actually began his career in public service as an intern in the city manager's office here in Waco years ago. Most recently, he served at the city of Comro as an Assistant City Administrator/ Director of Finance. Throughout his tenure in Comro, he advanced through increasingly responsible roles, including financial analyst, finance manager, Assistant Director of Finance, and the Director of Finance. Colin has served on the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association Committee on Economic Development and Capital Planning. He also previously served in several positions on the Board of GFOA of Texas. He is a Certified Government Finance Officer and holds a Bachelor of Arts degree from Baylor University and a Master in Public Administration degree from the University of North Texas. Help me welcome Colin to Waco.
Appreciate you being part of the finance team. I know we have pretty good sized budgets here and a very ambitious finance team with Blue Kostelich there, putting together a good team in the finance department. Really excited to work with you.
Right, next I want to make sure that we recognize Scrap Tire Collection Day. We hosted a Scrap Tire Collection Day on November sixteenth. At these events, up to ten tires per resident are collected and taken to be recycled at no cost to the resident. Staff collected over seven hundred tires from a hundred and twenty customers, representing over nine tons of tires that were given a new purpose and diverted from our landfill and for potential illegal dumping. Typically tire disposal fees are charged at our landfill and COBS Recycling Center, so free events like this are a cost savings to our residents and a benefit to the health and beautification of our community. Many thanks to staff who helped plan and put on this event. We also received some comments from residents who are extremely vocal of their thankfulness of our code staff and the work that they've been doing that led up to the tires Scrap Tire Day, which meant there were a lot less tires to be collected in their neighborhoods. And then lastly, I'd like to recognize employee appreciation, our employee appreciation event. On November seventh, we host our annual employee appreciation event at Brazos Park East. A huge thank you to city staff who make this event a success every year. It's actually one of my favorite events that we do. Members of several departments assisted on planning on the planning committee. Our employee engagement team helped facilitate planning and operations and staff from multiple departments signed up for shifts to assist throughout the event as well. As always, kudos to Jonathan and Megan and the Parks Team for the heavy lifting on planning and coordination. Employees enjoyed food, drinks, and desserts from many local vendors in a picnic style gathering with games and swag from our departments. And I'm just wondering, who won Jenga this year? Nope, nobody here.
No takers. What was the prize? Say what the prize was. You have all kinds of claims.
Is that if you can beat me.
All right, I see.
So in addition to this event, we're looking forward to our second year of hosting our employee and family appreciation event with a special city of Waco employee night event night, Wild Lights at the Zoo. That's coming up on Monday, December the ninth. Last year was our first year hosting an after-hours event for all of city staff at the zoo, and we really enjoy getting to spend time with staff and their families. And so we look forward to seeing you all there again. It's December the ninth, Monday, December the ninth. We have on this agenda, we have one informal report for you today, IR nine fourteen. This provides an update on the homelessness oversight in Waco. The city has previously served as the lead agency for our U. S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grant that provides continuum of care funding to support the local administration and operation of the homeless management information system. At the request of the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition and with approval by HUD, Prosper Waco will become the lead agency. The city of Waco will still support the planning grant and HMIS with matching funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program, but in coming weeks, you will receive an in-depth work session on homelessness. So if there's any questions about this IR, Galen Price is here to answer those today.
I was just going to mention that I appreciate the work of Prosper Waco and Jessica Addis taking over that as the new Executive Director. And our own council member Bearfield is chairing that. Is President or Chair?
Chair.
Chair. Getting ready to take that over. And just taking the lead in this whole continuum of care initiative that we are focusing on our homelessness issues and that whole continuum of care initiative. So, good report.
There are four public hearings on the agenda. Clint Peters will review those later on in the agenda today, but I would like to specifically highlight Public Hearing nine twenty-three for the honorary street naming of a portion of Circle Road to Pet Circle Road in recognition of Pet Circle Regional Animal Care Center located on the same road. As this is an honorary naming, the official street name will not change any legal addresses and will not need to be no addresses will need to be changed as a result. But we see the honorary street markers installed along the portion that portion of the of the road. We're so proud of the work that our staff has done out there at Pet Circle that we really want are glad to be able to recognize their work in this way. And then lastly, we have seventeen resolutions on the agenda today, and I would like to highlight Resolution nine twenty-seven that amends our American Rescue Plan Act funding plan to implement changes that were presented to the council on November the fifth meeting to provide two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars towards community center and fleet shop resiliency and an additional two hundred and forty-two thousand towards home rehabilitation. This amendment ensures that we will have we will have met our commitment deadline of those ARPA dollars, and we are well on our way to expanding those by the appropriate deadline, too.
On that one, I'm sorry, Deidre, I'm going to commend you on that because I know you've kind of been overseeing this whole ARPA allocation, and I know you have to thread the needle because you have to meet the terms of the ARPA grant, and you had to switch some things around because we have a deadline to expend those funds. And I know it hasn't been the easiest thing just to say, like what we were trying to do three years ago, some of it didn't quite fit the programs. We're having to be very nimble and pivot into these other other projects that that fit the definitional conditions of ARPA. So you've done a marvelous job. And when is it the end of next year? It was the twenty-sixth. I always forget.
Twenty-sixth is the expenditure day.
All right, thanks.
There are no ordinances on your agenda today. I think Kathy's happy about that. And so Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for today, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions. I was just going to comment on a couple of the other resolutions real quickly. Just the two of them, nine thirty and nine thirty-one are pointed to new economic development in the city. Nine thirty is goes toward the Coca-Cola Distribution Center, seventeen million dollars coming to the city. And our support of this is only a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, so getting some good bang for the buck on that for a seventeen million dollar investment from the Coca-Cola Distribution Center. The other one is a bigger deal, thirty-three million on seventy-seven eleven Imperial Drive. That's Van Tran MGM Transformers, a huge deal. Two hundred new full-time jobs, thirty-three million investment, four hundred and thirty thousand square foot facility, and just it's great welcoming these new cities into the community, new jobs, better financial security, a better tax base that we expand with these commercial businesses. So I'm excited to and happy to welcome these new businesses into town.
On that one especially, I was going to mention that I appreciated the intentional partnership and their commitment to increasing the education and presence of STEM and STEAM in our community, and I look forward to their partnership with the STEAM Center.
The other one, right quick, Deputy City Manager Emerson, I wanted to mention Resolution nine thirty-eight and just the big street projects we're doing. This is a ten over a ten million dollar project down on Bagby from Valley Mills to Kendrick. And these kind of projects are huge. They take several years, and we've got a lot of them going on in the city right now. But we're very intentional about trying to hit all the parts of the city, and that that stretch on Bagby has needed work for some time. The projected completion is September two thousand and twenty-five, so we're we've got some work to do on that yet. And the last one, just a small one, it's more symbolic and directional. Nine forty is project management software that we're buying. It's really renewal of a contract that we already have, but best-in-class services is what I as mayor, and I think this council wants to deliver to all the citizens and residents of Waco. And this having better project management software and having better systems helps us deliver better service product to y'all. So every time you see these, there's a couple in almost every agenda where we are trying to improve our systems so we get better service delivery. And that's all I have, Deputy City Manager Emerson. Anybody have any other comments on resolutions or the lack of ordinances today? We're good. With that, we will now go to find it here, the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes Resolutions two thousand and twenty-four, nine twenty-seven through Resolution nine or two thousand and twenty-four, nine forty-three. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? We are pulling two of them, nine thirty-nine and nine forty-three, and we'll vote on them separately. And that's it for that. The next item on the agenda is work session items, two thousand and twenty-four, nine thirteen through two thousand and twenty-four, nine twenty. Deputy City Manager Emerson, would you please introduce the first work session?
Absolutely. Blue has already made his way to the table.
Some Blue working his way.
Ready for it, Mayor.
He's but Blue is going to present our fourth quarter financial and investment report to you this afternoon.
Mayor and Council, great to be with you. Always fun to present the Q four financials because I will tell you upfront that these are unaudited and preliminary because the way that we have to do things with our year end closes a little bit different than the private sector in that we have to make accruals and as they come in over the next two, you know, two to three months after the fiscal year end closes, we are still making adjustments. So at this point, you know, we have everything to about a ninety-nine percent solution, but some of these numbers might move around. So if you see the different numbers on your your annual audit that we present, probably around the late February, March timeframe, that that is wild. We are still making a few entries, but we're going to jump right into it and go over these Q four financials. Again, like we did last time, you know, as we're still continuing to build, we're going to focus on the major funds, and that should say through fiscal year in Q four, but general fund and then the the major utilities. And we'll give a quick investment performance review. That that full investment report was provided to you in the packet.
Is that just cheap? I'm sorry to start picking on it. Yeah, by the time I'm done here, Mr. Booth may decide not that he doesn't want to come to work with the finance group. But anyway, is that supposed to be fiscal year quarter three, right, on that previous page?
That's what I was saying. That that one up there should say fiscal quarter, Q four. Missed that one update. The whole thing. Got it. But this one is right, Q four unaudited actuals versus the adopted budgets, how we're doing just over as a as a whole. You know, you got greens across the board, some are a little bit up, some are a little down, but that that green check is really within about three percent of our the year end forecast, within three percent of our adjusted budget. So we are we are operating in line with what we have told the public and and you as the council that we were going to do, some a little bit more, some a little bit less, but overall still positive results for for what we expected in the budget. Moving into the general fund first, our our actual year end ending at about two hundred point nine million, that was a little bit lower than the two hundred and three point eight million that we expected. Most of that is coming really in the the property taxes. Those have come in a little bit lower, a little bit slower than expected than than we normally have, so the the collections are running behind at this point, but we do have MCAD and the Tax Office and everyone are working on those collections. So they are they are they're trying to up those as much as possible. Sales taxes, yes, sir.
Is that I'm trying to remember if because all this kind of the extra four million or three point three million traditionally has trailed in over time, but I'm trying to remember if that how quickly that occurred. I don't know, let's take a look at that because it's it may just be normal. At the end of the year, we have all but, you know, three million.
It will, and as lawsuits are still out there pending, you know, those payments are no longer being made under the new the new property tax laws that are in place. So, you know, they will hold back with the the payment in full. Usually it was a payment up to, you know, the the contested amount and then, you know, whatever the settlement was after that, but now it's it's all held back. So that's why we're seeing collections a little bit lower than than historicals.
Got it. Thanks, Blue.
All right, sales tax is a good news story for us, about one point five million up on the year. So I will say again, we'll we'll go over this in the next couple of slides. Sales tax is extremely volatile and and very heavily dependent upon the economy, while the economy is doing good. And we have a little bit of clarification, and at least on the the election standpoint, there is still some skepticism, but also some uncertainty out there in the markets that that might affect how consumers react. So we are watching sales tax. Franchise fees down about a million dollars in this year. That's really just the the different price of gas and the different usage of of our franchise ways in in the city. But overall, the the interest is what really helped us, the interest on our our investment earnings for the general fund. Looks like they're going to be up about six point four million dollars. So whereas we did come in about three million dollars below where we thought we would, if you'll see the expenses below, we're twelve million dollars ahead of where we we anticipated. So the adjusted budget being about two hundred and nine million, we actually ended at about a hundred and ninety-seven million of actual spend. So most of that really through the operational savings from from the city. So good performance there. That will instead of taking out about five point three million dollars of our reserves, we're actually putting back about three point eight for this year. That three point eight, again, preliminary. I know that we still have some accruals to do for sales tax abatements and rebates to to businesses that we have three eighties with. So some of that's going to come down slightly, but it should not come down significantly. So I would say we're we're safe between about three to three point eight million dollars for for ending in the fiscal year to the good.
Blue, on this one, can you remind me, and I like how you've kind of condensed this and the consistency from these bigger funds makes a lot of sense, but on the transfers out, I'm trying to remember, that's a big number. Give me a couple. What are the bigger items there?
We transfer out, you know, about eighteen million dollars to street maintenance. We transfer out for contracts with other like other agencies, outside agency, anything of those things would would fit into that transfer out.
Okay. And I'll follow up on some of this stuff.
Absolutely.
On the presentation, it looks great.
Yeah, for presentation purposes, we're trying to make it as simple as possible, but Colin doesn't know behind me, he's going to he's got a he's got a task at hand to develop a full monthly management report.
Snuck out, yeah.
Okay, he has not snuck out. All right, we're still good, but we're going to we're going to develop a full monthly management report that will have a much more detail for you, and that will that will help you understand what are in all of these.
Yeah, the bigger part of that street maintenance.
Biggest part of this, yes, street maintenance. All right, sales tax. This is a flashback to our Q three estimates. We really thought we were going to end the year about fifty-six point seven million. That was with two months remaining. Where we came out is about fifty-six point eight, so slightly better, but we were we were very much on with where we thought we were going to be. This is good performance, good, especially in the the economic times that we had over this last year with a lot of pullback in consumer spending. So overall, good results here. We're going to watch this. We're going to watch this heavily. You know, what we've seen right now since the election, the Fed has come out, we're seeing some different policies that are up in the air that could be coming and taking place. You know, that that could affect what the Fed does with the rates. We do believe that there's going to be a twenty-five basis point cut in the Fed rate coming up in the next meeting, but after that, it gets really shaky now. We were on a path of going trending down. I think they're going to pull back and hold and see what policies actually get implemented. So if rates stay high, you know, we may still see a little bit of lag in our consumer spending, which will affect the the increase in our in our sales tax. But all that is to be seen, and I think we have a few months to really get our feet under us and see what's going to happen.
Blue, can you remind me what I meant to go back and look for this? Wouldn't we put in our twenty twenty-five budget for sales tax? Was it fifty? I think it was fifty-five, maybe?
I want to say it was fifty. It's right around this number.
Yeah, I think it was pretty tight on what was actually.
It's very tight to where we are. So where we where we thought we were doing, we were doing about a three to four percent jump over that fifty-five million, so we're we're going to be right around that fifty-seven million mark.
Got it.
For fiscal twenty-five.
Still better year-over-year by two percent, but not trending to the five, seven.
Not trending to the way that we were.
Yep.
All right, a little bit more. This is a this is a busy chart, but really what we're trying to show here is the the rolling twelve percent change month over month, and and those dark blue bars is what I want to draw your attention to. That's that's the inflation adjusted. So when we're talking about inflation and how much the impact is, what we're trying to build out is really our base in this and see if if the same dollar is increasing year over year because of actual consumer spend or if it's an inflationary factor. And what we see here is really back in about March, the post-COVID influx of all the funds that we got, you know, that started tapering off. Really about March of this year, two thousand and twenty-four, is when we started seeing that that little dip that started coming back up. And now you see the the purple line starting to really trend back up. So November twenty twenty-four, which was September, sales tax, actual spin of two point two point two two percent. So we are starting to trend in the right direction on the rolling twelve average. Rolling twelve means the last twelve months, so every month you're adding on a month and chopping off the chopping off one month. So good trends here. We like what we see. This is this is good news for us, and we will continue, we hope to continue to see this continually increase. Moving over to the major funds, the water fund, this is the one fund that we will be dipping a little bit into reserves for. Their overall performance came in at a deficit of one million. That is better than what we had actually budgeted for if you look at that revised budget column. So those those revenues coming in at seventy-one million, really the the charges for services for for this size of a fund, very, very close to to what we budgeted, just just a slight offset. Contributions coming in for development, so at three point two million. That's something that we don't know, so we don't budget for that, so that's always a little bit of a plus in that. But then again, the interest saving or the interest earnings on our investments is what's really pushing this up. So we had we had planned on using about that three point three million dollars. Ends up, we're not going to need that, so that that cancels out. We'll actually use about one point zero million.
One observation I had on this, Blue, was the fourth quarter. And on July first, we changed the ordinance. We told people, we encouraged people not to use as much water, which is sort of a shooting ourselves in the foot from a revenue perspective, but I mean, I think from an overall, yeah, water conservation is the right thing to do.
Absolutely. Water conservation is the right thing to do, so it's a great thing to to it's a great way to go forward. It helps protect us for years to come. It does come with a little bit of a revenue offset to it, but then again, you know, if you look at it on the expense side, some of those variable costs of treating that water go down because of less usage. So there will be a little bit of an offset, lower lower revenue, but lower expenses as well. So it'll be it'll be good to see, and that's one of the things that we want to put in that monthly management report is to be able to see that trend on the the average daily consumption.
Right. It's really kind of stark to see, I'm sorry to interrupt, stark to see there when you see the sixty-two last year going to sixty point seven and even under revenues under budget. But again, and then and it's hard to do year-over-year, too, but can we come up with some kind of a rubric for measuring our conservation success, if you will? It's hard to do year-over-year from last year because we were in a drought, you know?
Right.
And now, so third quarter over third quarter sort of, this will be interesting to see, and we'll know there's some noise around the data, but.
There's going to be noise around the weather.
Yep.
Yes.
Exactly. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I was just going to note that in terms of missing the mark on on budget revenue, it likely didn't help that we instituted the conservation efforts after our wetted spring in in quite some time. And when it's raining, people aren't using as much water to to water their lawns in the first place. So and I will say, just looking at the sixty versus the sixty-one versus sixty-two, it is a little misleading because it is sixty point seven, so almost sixty-one. We are, you know, we are really close to that sixty-one.
On the opposite side of water, the wastewater. This is this is your wastewater in the R. W. Mars into one combined wastewater fund, so both of those will be in here as well. And what you're going to see on this, the charges for services is really what's driving that that increase, plus the contributions, plus your interest earned on this. So going from seventy to seventy-eight, some of this is built in because a lot of the projects that we're doing for the future needed that that rate increase on that aspect. So we are building up for future projects in that. The the expense side, two point one unfavorable, that's really due to a lot of the necessary maintenance on these systems, things that come up that you've got to you got to take care of at the time. So a lot of that maintenance and the capital expenditures is where you're going to see the the overage in that budget, but still positive performance for this, putting putting in the surplus two point seven million dollars.
And Blue, the transfers out on these utility funds, water and wastewater, that's primarily debt.
That's that's going to be mostly debt in in your utilities.
Debt payment for amortized.
Yeah, we're transferring from those those utility funds to the debt service fund to pay those those debt payments.
Got it. Okay.
All right, on the solid waste, solid waste charges for services, again, a little bit of a rate increase in this fiscal year due to some of the future projects, the the projects that are ongoing helping pay for those, but overall, charges for services up one point two million dollars, the interest earnings up nine hundred thousand. Good results in our expenses. It's it's mostly your operational savings. I wish I could point to one. I dug through all their financials. You can't really point to one aspect of where their operational savings were. It was just all over the place, but really on on track with with budget. So revenues, expenses extremely flat, so a surplus of a grand total of about twenty thousand dollars. So very, very tied on that, but good good results from the the solid waste fund. On your drainage, much of the same story, the charges for service slightly down, but overall, very, very much flat, just a slight two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar deficit, offset partially by your interest earned. So as far as your variance on that versus your actuals versus your your revised budget, extremely flat at thirty thousand dollars under where we thought we would be. Again, operational savings in this of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so you're going to put a surplus back of about one point five million dollars for future.
Blue, before we leave this, again, I like how you condensed it into the the big five, if you will, the general and the four big utilities. But is this the last look? Is this the last time we're going to see kind of a report on last year? Because I would suggest.
You will see you will see the audited results in a in a few months, probably late like late February, early March, depending on how the the audit fieldwork hasn't started yet, so as soon as they come in. Depending on how, the, the audit fieldwork hasn't started yet. So as soon as they come in and, and get their, their feet on the ground, we'll have a better understanding of where we will be. But I hope to have that, that audit done by, by the mid, by mid-February.
Great. And with that, I know that I, and I think this council is like to see kind of our track record on the amenity funds to the golf course, the.
Absolutely.
The zoo, the ranger museum, and maybe that could be a one-page combined or something. Because I, I do like how you've made this brief for presentation, but I know those, we all kind of like to track what's happening there too, and how, how much we're allocating in support of those. The, basically the airport, the convention center, zoo, ranger museum, and golf course.
Okay. So those are our minor enterprise funds, so we were only doing the majors on this one, but we can, we can easily put that together.
Yeah, to me, that's kind of a tier-two. And then I think there's a tier-three, everything else, you know, to get to that, what next year we have five-hundred-and-eighty-five million budgeted.
We can put together a summary sheet and I'll, I can get that out to you.
Get for last year, then it's going forward, maybe, maybe that, that same kind of logic, the big five.
We'll revise this and make sure that we get it all.
Everything else.
Yes, sir.
Good work, Blue.
All right. One quick page on our investment reports. Again, you can see all the details in, in the report that's in your packet. But overall, the, the, the highlights from this, our par value is about almost nine-hundred-and-twenty million dollars. This, this is operator, operating funds plus all the bond funds that we sold. So we, we do keep those in investment accounts until those projects are spent out, and we draw these, these funds down in order to pay for the, the projects that we issued the debt for. Overall, good, good results, you know, with the, the swing in the market. We, we have a net gain on our, on our books for the first time in a while. So whereas we had an unrealized loss last quarter of eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, you know, our, our unrealized gain at this point went back up to two-point-nine. That's just the value of those. If you had to liquidate all at once, we're not going to take a loss on our investments. It's, it's still a gain. So good results from that. If you look at the income summary, the net income from the quarter, eleven million dollars in interest earnings. So that puts our fiscal year-to-date net income at thirty-six-point-four million dollars of investment earnings. Good, good results from, from Hilltop and from our finance team in, in putting this, these investments out, putting this money to work for us so that we, we have something to show for it rather than just paying out.
I like how you're highlighting this page as part of the, kind of the base report, because, I mean, the number I look at on this is at nine-nineteen point seven. That's the cash, that's our cash, right? And I know that we have a, an off-site or, or an extra meeting, I shouldn't call it an off-site retreat, that sounds kind of fun, but actually we have an extra meeting in early December, the council does, to talk about capital improvement projects and our cash position and our debt position and getting a, getting a tight handle on that nine-nineteen. You know, what, which fund does it belong to? How much of that is assigned? And most of this nine-nineteen is assigned to capital improvement.
Most of it's already assigned at this point.
To capital improvements from previous years that we're trying to go out there and get the work crew ready to go build it. But some of it is unassigned, and, and as we look at that, again, I like highlighting this page, and maybe we have a more developed one-page around that nine-nineteen. Where is it? What's it allocated to? What's unassigned? What's assigned? And which fund does it belong to? That sort of thing. But this is going the right direction, for sure.
Great.
Mr. Booth, are you taking notes on this?
Sir.
Good. Our new, our new finance guy, he's still here.
All right, Mayor, Council. That, that really wraps up the, the Q4 financials, unaudited preliminary financials and the investment report. But again, you know, your general fund revenues, really all the enterprise funds, the major enterprise funds coming in very much in line with budgets, some up on revenue, some down. But overall, good, good results from, from this fiscal year. Pause here, Mayor, Council, and take any other questions you have.
Great job. Any comments, questions? Okay, thanks, Blue. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Deputy City Manager, J. Drew Emerson, will you please introduce the next speaker?
Sure. Thanks, Blue. Next, we'll have, welcome Chief Walker to the table to provide an update on his first ninety days in the role as Waco's Fire Chief. In these ninety days, Chief Walker has focused on relationship building, understanding the existing culture, and learning city processes while also assessing departmental performance. Out of this, Chief has developed a strategic roadmap for the department, and I'll turn it over to you, Chief, to present your first ninety days and strategic roadmap.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for being here today. As stated, I'm Scott Walker, the new Waco Fire Chief, and I am here today to provide you with an update on my first ninety days as the Fire Chief. Today, I'll be covering a, finding an overview of the Fire Department, my vision for the department, my transition plan, my outreach efforts, the common themes I've identified, and what moving forward looks like. So the Waco Fire Department is what's known as an all-hazard fire department. What this means is our capabilities really match the needs of the community in any type of emergency response outside of law enforcement. As the largest fire department between Austin and Dallas, we really are a hub. We provide obviously service to our residents, but we also support the neighboring communities with mutual aid. Our hazardous materials team and technical rescue teams actually cover several hundred square miles within the region. So we're more than just a resource for the city of Waco. We have two-hundred-and-twenty-one sworn members. Most of those members do work on fire trucks, delivering service directly to the community. We have thirteen fire stations, soon to be state, fourteen, with Station Fifteen opening up here in just a few months. We have twelve engine companies, soon to be thirteen with new Station Fifteen. Three truck companies, these are our large aerial ladder truck, type trucks. We have two battalion chief units that split the city in half and manage the city for us. We cover a hundred-and-nine square miles, and we respond to about twenty-two thousand calls for service each year. So coming into this position, I did have a vision for the department. My two highest priorities were going to be ensuring that we are providing the very best service to the community, high-level customer service in everything we do, fire, emergency medical, hazardous materials, code enforcement, community outreach. Second was going to be our priority was going to be members' health and safety, and that they are empowered to do good work. Firefighters are more at risk today with cancer, mental health challenges, just society in general. So it's a priority for me as the Fire Chief to make sure I'm taking care of our folks. They are our most valuable asset. Also, I want to make sure they're engaged. Our new workforce particularly wants to know the why. They want to be engaged. They'll help us get there. They can do good work, and we need to let them be part of the process. Also, want to make sure we have a culture where everyone is welcome, valued, and engaged. And what I mean by that is everybody is welcome here, but also they need to know that their input is valued. It'll be part of the decision-making process. There'll be opportunities for them to share that. A culture where all members have the opportunity for success. Not everybody wants to be the next Fire Chief. If they do, I might make sure they understand what that path looks like, professional development, mentorship, and support for all. If you want to be the best firefighter, I want that for you as well. Again, I want to make sure you have the access to those resources to do just that. We need to make sure we are constantly evolving and seeking innovative solutions. And this is a big one for the fire service. Sometimes we can be a little reluctant and resistant to change in the fire service. The world's changing, science, knowledge, technology. We need to use those resources and those changes to make us better and more effective. We need to be data-informed in our decision-making process. And I specifically say data-informed because we can't lose sight that we serve the people and the residents of Waco. We serve human beings. We need to remember that in our decision-making. Yes, we need to be objective and be able to defend and clearly quantify our ass to all of you and to city leadership, but we also can't lose sight of who we serve. And then part of that is being engaged and listening to the community, both for me as the Fire Chief and our members. And I can tell you, the Waco firefighters have been engaged with the community at a very high level. I want to continue to build upon that. But it's important that we are open and transparent, and not only sharing with them, but listening to them. What are their needs? Are we meeting the needs? What are the needs of tomorrow? And then finally, we need to live our mission and values. If that's what we say, we, or who we say we are, and if that's what we're doing, we need to make sure that's what we're doing. Along with the vision, I had a transition plan, the, you know, usual thirty, sixty, hundred-and-eighty-day plan coming into this position. It was based on three really phases, building trust-based relationships, learning the understanding of the Waco way, and assessing the current state of the department. I truly believe the more relationships we have, the more success we can have. So I'm building relationships and have been with my executive leadership team, the members of the department, our association, our community, our city leadership, regional fire chiefs across the region, and others. Learning and understanding the Waco way. While I have a lot of experience in the fire service and in municipal government, it's certainly not Waco, and we all do things a little bit different. So I need to learn our processes, our procedures, our H R processes, budget process, procurement processes, and in the internal and within the Fire Department, our own processes there. At the same time, I'm doing an assessment of the department, the SWAT analysis, looking at our strengths. What are we doing well? What are our weaknesses? Meaning, what are we doing, but maybe we could do a little better? What are those opportunities that we're not doing but need to be or should be? And then threats or risks. What are either any imminent risks or potential risks? We need to make sure we're planning for and mitigating and preventing those if possible. So most of my efforts have been spent on outreach, and, and that's what I'll talk primarily about here. So I hit the ground running. And, and on day one, I was in the employee orientation like all new employees, but after that, I was meeting with my leadership team. My deputy chiefs are my executive leadership team. I met with them immediately, wanted them to know who I am, how I think, my vision, the same types of things I'm sharing with you. And I wanted to hear from them. I wanted to know who they were, what they've been doing. They have the knowledge and experience that I need to learn from them. So those have been very productive. Extending that to my battalion chiefs the next day, they're part of my command team. I need them to, all of us to be on the same page. I need them to know who I am as well. And then our captains, here in this department, the captains serve a really critical role managing fire stations. So they are part of the leadership team. So I really want to make sure they understand, you know, my thinking and where I want us to move, move into the future. And then from there, we went into what I described as town hall-style meetings. The first four Fridays, I scheduled a meeting in our community center. It was an open drop-in meeting for our firefighters from one to four. I didn't know if anybody would show up, if everybody would. We can see on the slide that just about everybody that could, did show up, our V C's, our captains lieutenants, our engineers, our firefighters. I could not be more happy how those went. Those were very productive, and those weren't me standing in front of a podium speaking. These are me sitting with the members, engaging in conversation, listening to them, yes, explaining who I am and how I think, but I wanted to hear from them, you know, what are their, what are their feelings? What are their needs? What do we need to work on? And those were very productive over those, that first month. And then from there, moved into what I described as listening tours. I've been visiting fire stations. My goal is to hit every station on every shift, and these are a little bit more intimate conversations. Me sitting at the kitchen table with the members and really understanding in their environment where they're more comfortable to talk. Those have been productive as well. And I will say, out of those, we identified some safety issues that need to be addressed. We addressed those immediately, and so those were productive. The members saw that type of productivity, and I think that really helped build that relationship. Our female firefighters, as I said, it's important to me that we have a culture where everybody is welcome and valued and engaged. I met with our female firefighters, and I want to make sure I knew what the culture was. How are they integrated, being treated? I can tell you, proud to hear that they said the culture is good. They feel they are treated well within the Waco Fire Department. So we have a solid foundation to build upon. Our peer support team, it's important, firefighters are people. They struggle with financial troubles, family troubles, mental health challenges, those types of things. We want to make sure we have support for them, and we do that through the peer support team and the fire service. I met with them to make sure they understand I support them as they support our people. I visit our dispatch center, wanted to see how the Fire Department Dispatch Center works and the Police Department Dispatch. It's all combined up in the police tower. Visit our training facility. Back to my first two goals, if we want to deliver the best service and we want to keep people safe, we need to be well-trained. So I want to make sure I understood the training process here. Meeting with local four-seventy-eight, I, I do strongly believe in a productive and a positive relationship with labor management. Think together, we can accomplish more than when we're at odds. And then director meetings, building relationships with the city leadership team, the C M O office, our different directors. I am part of the executive leadership team for the city and have a responsibility and obligation to help move the city forward, not just the Fire Department. Those meetings have been very productive, meeting with our, our fleet director, our H R director, our water director, our police chief, facilities directors, and others. And then I've been also engaging in crew ride-outs or riding on calls. I want to see the firefighters in action, doing, touching and, and delivering service to the community. So that's been productive. I respond to incidents. I get paged out on our larger incidents. I respond to those fires, large car wrecks, those types of things. I want to go out and see the folks in action there. And then from there, I really started strategic partner meetings, so meeting with our regional fire chiefs, both paid and unpaid. We, in the fire service, we definitely need to rely on each other and work with each other and have those relationships. Been meeting with A M R. A M R obviously provides our advanced life support here in the system and our transport needs. Want to make sure forming a relationship with them, and we meet regularly with them to really look at the service level and how and what we can do to improve. Working with Baylor Emergency Management, I've been to a Baylor game up in the Emergency Operations Center to see how that operation works. So building a relationship there. Visiting school districts, got a tour of the new Waco I S D High School, quite an impressive facility, I can say. The commitment to young people in this community is like nothing I've ever seen. So that was quite an impressive facility. And then multiple community events, the recent Habit After Humanity Dinner, some Baylor events, some different church activities, some chamber events I go to. Every chance I can, I try to attend those. Again, I want to build a relationship with the community. So from all of that outreach and what I've heard, I have identified some common themes. And I will point out, what I identified was also what was identified by our consultant that was brought in, Kramer and Associates, to assess the department. Many of the same things. So I think it's good to have a third-party objective person see that as well. But improved communication, regardless of private or public sector, right, we always hear this one, we'll never be able to do enough, but we need to keep trying to always reach that goal. And so we're already working on ways to improve upon that. I'll share in just a minute. Employee engagement opportunity. Our folks need to have the opportunity to be engaged. It doesn't matter if it works for me, it's got to work for the firefighters. At two in the morning, I'm usually home asleep while they're out delivering service. The tools and equipment they have, it's got to work for those folks as they deliver service to the community. Additional training, there is a need there, I've identified, and we're working on that. Our E M S service, service delivery, I do believe there's opportunities to expand the level of care we can provide to the community, and we're expanding, or exploring what that could look like. Need for more proactive planning. You know, the mayor and council over the last several years have been so supportive with fire stations and apparatus. It's my job to make sure we don't fall back and disrepair. My job to look out five, ten, fifteen, twenty years so that we know where we're going, and we are ready when the time, the need arises. I like to quote Wayne Gretzky, right? He said, he stated not where the puck was, but where the puck was going to be. That's my goal as a Fire Chief, to make sure this city and this department is ready when the need arises for the community. Now, hiring process, I, I will say, our process is a little bit antiquated, I have to admit, and, and there's opportunity here. It's not really designed for today's modern fire service, and we're already working with our H R director. And this isn't a fault of anybody. It's just time goes by and things happen. So I want to make sure we have a process that's designed for firefighters in today's world and a diverse type of, you know, fire service that we're looking to have. Staffing needs, we do have some staffing needs, and, and we'll work on a plan to really make sure that first, we can demonstrate what we have, we're using effectively, efficiently, so you know when we ask, we need it. And we also realize, we're part of the city. There's many city departments that have needs as well. So we'll work on a strategy with City Manager's Office to make sure that our needs are known and phase those in over time, getting the most, prioritize our needs the best we can. And then facilities needs, there is some more needs, and, and yes, you have all been very supportive of the Fire Department. I can't thank you enough. Coming in as a Fire Chief, that's certainly a, a plus. But we do have some needs still, and I'll say they're not, they are needs, not wants. We still have some stations that are over sixty years old. We have stations that only have one bathroom, common dorms. They don't fit modern fire press, actually cannot be backed into the station. When they back in, the exhaust goes right into the day area or the dorm area, just a single door. And, you know, with one bathroom, it really does, can challenge our recruiting efforts because while we say we want people, if you don't have a place to go to the bathroom, sometimes that's not the best message for us. And so from all of that, I have developed with my executive leadership team a strategic roadmap. We're improving communication, as I said. We have a weekly report that goes out to the membership, so they see what we're doing and, and working on each week. We have captains and lieutenant quarterly meetings, so they can hear from me and my executive team to ask us questions, fully open and transparent about what we're doing. We're using all tools, social media, email, obviously. Our V C's are expected to visit fire stations and carry that message forward to make sure our folks know what's going on, why we're doing things, and why we're doing it a certain way, but also be open to and hearing from them. Member engagement, we are forming committees so that when we have needs, rather than me try to decide everything, I certainly may know a lot. I don't know everything. And so I want input from all the members. And so we're forming committees. So we have, you know, whether it be recruitment or E M S or uniform committee. We'll have a committee for everybody to weigh in, get their input in, and then from that, we'll come up with the best solution. Our recruiting, testing, and selection, I'm very excited about this. Our recruiting side, we're forming a recruiting committee to go out and recruit in all corners of Waco for firefighters, let everybody know, this is a great job. It's a job for you. Here's the path. And we can then mentor folks, mentor them, make sure they're physically and mentally prepared for the position and for the career. Also, on the testing and selection, there are some modern tools that we can do, virtual testing tools, and the tests are designed with cognitive and behavioral qualities in the test that are certified and validated, and they're designed to actually hire firefighters in today's world. So excited about some opportunities we have there. We're developing our own Fire Department K P I's. I know the mayor and council have developed strategic goals that we certainly strive to achieve for you. City manager's website has metrics on there that we are actually have updated for next year for the Fire Department. We also want to have our own K P I's to measure our response times, our call volume, our community events, those types of things. So we know, are we trending in the right direction? Where are we going? We're going to affirm our mission, vision, motto, and value statements. As the new Fire Chief, I just want to make sure it still applies. If, if the members like the mission statement, we say it still applies, great. I just want to affirm that. We do need a value statement or a list of values. Whether that's something we don't have, I want to have that because that really should drive who we are and what we do. Define our Fire Department programs. This is an area there isn't, this is an opportunity for us. We have a lot of great programs, but they're not necessarily well-defined as far as the services they provide, the trainings needed, the budgets needed, the peoples needed. So I've tasked my staff to really look at their programs and define the box. So then we can start managing those. It's difficult to manage something that's not really defined. And then a comprehensive staffing model, as I mentioned, we're working on what that could look like over the long range because we have to plan for obviously needs today, but also any new stations and new development. Make sure we're ready for, ease those into the budget, try to help, you know, with, with your planning and for budget, our city manager's office, and our. Office, and our Chief Financial Officer. We don't want to be a burden, and we don't want to be surprises on the budget, whether it be for people, stations, or apparatus. We're improving on our health and wellness programs. As I mentioned, our peer support folks are, we are pushing our firefighter annual physicals, make sure our members are getting those. We're looking at cancer screening, bringing on some other tools as far as for, you know, if you're having family issues, personal, financial issues, depression, anxiety, we might make sure all the tools are here for you for our members. Our goal is to keep our members healthy and strong on the fire trucks, prevent them ever having to leave the truck because of these issues. So we want to really have robust programs for the folks. Apparatus replacement plan, I'm proud to say this is actually already done. So, we have built out a apparatus replacement plan through 2050, and showing on a 15-year lifecycle how many apparatus, engines, ladders, our large-scale cost items we need to be replacing each year. Again, we provide that to the City Manager's Office, to our financial staff, and then they can help plan on that or put that into the budget they bring forward to you. Fire station needs forecast, I mentioned we have some needs. Also have some new development on the horizon we want to plan for. So we've built out a 10-year CIP plan for current needs and future needs, and we're sharing and shared with the City Manager's Office as well. I'm excited about this as well. Predictive analytics tool, you know, we don't want to just put water and fires in the fire service, right? We've got to be objective, we've got to be data-informed, we need the tools to do that. There's some really great tools that can analyze data and then predict the impact and then demonstrate it, so I can come here and show you exactly what I'm talking about. Perfect example is this, we can identify, for instance, an area in Waco that maybe has the highest concentration of fires. Maybe it's north, south, east, or west Waco. We can look at that area, then task our community outreach folks to look at that area. Is this a senior population? Is it a young population? Do we need to go into senior centers and give them fire education and knowledge how to help protect themselves? Do we need to do smoke detector walks in those areas? Do we need to go into schools and educate the youth that are in these areas? I truly believe through doing this type of a risk analysis and using this data, we can identify those areas, and I think we could put those efforts forward in a year. I could bring that to you, a new map that shows those areas are no longer hotspots for us. So that's the types of things we want to bring online. Expanding our community outreach ties right into that. We have really great programs, great staff are committed to that, but I do want to build upon that. That's our smoke detector walks, car seat installations, outreach to schools, those types of things. Technology to manage a fire code. Fire, we have life safety systems, smoke alarms, sprinklers are required to be tested annually. Fire departments don't do those tests. Third parties do those tests. And so all fire departments across the country are tasked making sure those tests are being done. It's just a daunting scale that we would need multiple staff to do that. There's tools can do that for us. The technology will work for us. This will make our community safer for our residents, our visitors, and[767.44]
Fire Department in Waco and the Police Department of Waco are best in class. And I think the community is very proud of what you're, what you're doing. And, and I, I love to brag on you guys. So the, I liked your vision page, just to kind of go through it. Not every deal, but I like the direction you're going. High level customer service. To me, that's what we're trying to do here at the City of Waco, best in class. That's what we want here. And I like the energy you're bringing to the, to the table here. Response times are, are, are very good. The ISO rating, which you didn't even talk about, which is kind of a neat cornerstone of what the fire department delivers to the, to the community is that insurance rating. The Insurance Services Office, I finally figured out what ISO is. Insurance Services Office. That high rating with the response times and the location and the, and the service allows us to pass on insurance savings to all the citizens and the residents in, in the, in the city. The culture where everyone is welcome, valued and engaged in a culture where all members have the opportunity for success. I really, I like that a lot. I know that you mentioned the female element working up, but I, I know that this is a goal of the council and the city is the diversity also. And, and that's an overriding theme throughout what we're doing. So I like your, your focus there on that. And then finally, just engaged in listening to the community and community outreach, I think is so important. And showing all of our residents what you guys do, becoming friends within the neighborhood is, is, and it's an intentional process and you guys are obviously doing that. So great presentation. I look forward to seeing those KPIs and what you come up with there. I'm a big fan of looking at trends and trend analysis and direction and so far, so good. I appreciate you and, and the Waco Fire Department.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other questions for Chief Walker? Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your vision. Next, we'll have Trey Busby, I'm sorry, Fleet Services Director here to provide a comprehensive look at Fleet Services, operations and critical internal services functions that keeps our city rolling. The subtable include operations, activities, acquisitions, funding, data analytics and the planned work. Thank you, Trey.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Mayor. Really appreciate you being here. I've got several things I want to go through on Fleet Services. It's going to be data, maybe a lot of numbers, probably not as many as Blues. But I suspect there will be some questions that you have if we can't get through them. We'll start to follow up with any kind of questions that you may have after the meeting today. Our purpose today is to do a overview of Fleet Services, talk about our vehicle equipment acquisitions and funding, some data and analytics that we're tracking, accomplishments in fiscal year 2024 and what our work time is like fiscal year 2025. There's no expenditures and no council action being requested with this report. And like I said, after the meeting today, we would report any questions you may have. Wanted to start with an overview of Fleet Services Department. That's kind of what we did, we said, we do try to keep the city rolling, but our mission does include the opportunity to provide the city with safe, dependable vehicles with equipment and manage those surplus assets in an efficient and cost-effective manner. We have 29 Fleet Services Department staff, and I do want to talk about them for just a moment. Did bring my fleet manager today, John Tippies here in the back. He and our supervisor team are really a big part of the success we have in fleet. We do have a professional fleet, fleet staff. We have a number of staff members that have the Automotive Service Excellence or ASE Master Certification for equipment technicians, a number of courses they've taken. We have several of our employees that have completed the Texas State Technical College Automotive Program and Diesel Technology Programs. Our fire shop employees have emergency vehicle training certifications for fire apparatus repair. We have several of our employees that have Class A and Class B CDLs with hazmat endorsements to operate our fuel truck. And then we also have staff that have industry training certifications from John Deere, Bobcat Equipment and Caterpillar. Kind of a snapshot of our department is we have a $2 million annual operating budget, manage about 1,700 fleet assets, value, the acquisition cost for those is $94 million. Breakdown on that chart next to it, you can see that rolling stock represents the largest number of units and the largest investment. Heavy equipment is not as many units, but still represents a significant investment. All of those equipment and assets support city operational functions. And that breakdown in terms of fund, of fund is if you look at the enterprise fund, it's around 45 million. The general fund's about 47 million. And then we've got a couple of million, about $2 million that's of assets in our fleet, information technology and others, internal services departments.
I'm sorry, Director Busby, what was that breakdown again? The 100 million is mostly general?
That breakdown in terms of enterprise fund is about 45 million for enterprise fund departments, for general fund about 47 million. And then we have internal and special service departments about $2 million.
That's, that's sorted by acquisition cost?
Yes, sir. That's acquisition cost. It's not replacement cost. We'll talk about that here later in the presentation.
So the 45 million spread out between like water, wastewater?
Yes, sir. Enterprise would be solid waste, water utilities, those types of things.
The trash trucks?
Yes, sir.
So it's about half and half.
Yes, sir. The compacters at the landfill, bulldozers, those types of things. Yes, sir.
Got it. Thanks.
I'm going to run through that list of the types of equipment, kind of with those categories in compass, but rolling stock would be sedans, light vehicle, heavy pickup trucks, dump trucks, asphalt repair trucks, heavy equipment would be backhoes, excavators, bulldozers, compacters, backup generators or the stationary generator we have at our fleet, excuse me, at our facilities, such as the emergency operations center that provide backup power. Trailers are a pretty broad category, include everything from transport trailers to message boards and signal boards, cargo box trailers, dump trailers. Support equipment's going to include sewer cleaning equipment, air compressors, welders, walk behind rollers, mowers, or somewhat self-explanatory, it's going to be what we find at Cottonwood Creek Golf Course in our Parks and Recreation Department. Farm equipment would include tractors, shredders, box blades, carts and UTVs. We'd find those at, say, the zoo, which would be your small carts and your service carts that are used at some campus level activities. Marine would be some of the motorboats that fire department owns. And the miscellaneous equipment would be the jaws of life, chainsaws and air blowers and ventilators that fire department uses. Our programs of service include our maintenance shops, which include our light shop, which would be your smaller light duty trucks, sedans, police vehicles, our heavy shop, which would include dump trucks and heavy equipment, and our fire shop, which is specifically dedicated for fire apparatus repair. Within those shops, we do manage a parts supply room. And we also, I do want to highlight a few things that our staff does. We do have, for instance, our fire shop will have staff that may go out from time to time on after hours calls with the fire department to support them if they have any issues with the operation of their vehicles during their call. We also have a mobile repair truck. Most of the work we do in fleet is primarily general maintenance and repair, be minor repairs such as replacing light bulbs in vehicles, oil changes and so forth. Most of the heavier type repairs, say if you're trying to get into a Cummins transmission, would be sublet because of the special requirements of equipment and training that a vendor can provide. I'd say that we also have a pretty important role play in our resiliency. We do support our backup generators. We keep anti-gel additives for diesel for cold weather. And we also, from time to time, will serve as a staging location for heavy equipment if it is going to get cold and say Public Works or Water Utilities needs to have a piece of equipment stored so that the hydraulic systems and oils don't, it takes a little while in cold weather to get that type of equipment going. I hope to say, Mayor, I know you've talked a lot about this and other council members have about, you know, how important data is. Well, I'll tell you that fleet is very data-rich. Lot of opportunities to get trained on asset and resource management. And we're really trying to push that way and we'll walk through some of that later in the presentation. Another area that we cover are surplus assets and auctions. And over the last three fiscal years, we've collected a little over $1 million in revenues from the sale of surplus assets. And we, we have an idea of how to use that to help support fleet acquisitions going forward in the future in some conversations we're having with fiscal services.
Hey, Trey, right quick, there are some problems hearing you on live, so can you move over to that middle mic? Yes, for some reason that mic's not working.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, you're good.
You're on a, you're on a great roll, though.
Yeah, I've got a lot of information. Oh, there we go. I can hear myself now. We've got a lot of information to cover and a lot of data in this, and so I've got 20 minutes, I want to try to get through it. I know over the last probably several months, we've had some questions about, from the public and from council both, about what our vehicle and equipment acquisition process looks like. And this is an overview of that. There's a lot of things that happen, a lot of moving parts. But the, the, what I would say, the, the theme that I think I would take away from, from our process is communication and coordination across departments. That is critical. We have a number of meetings and a number of interaction with fire department, Public Works and other, other departments to make sure that we understand their needs, they understand our timelines and our processes. But in general, we look at the vehicle or equipment, if it's a replacement or addition. There's a request process the department will submit. We'll go through a review process. We'll do some vendor outreach through our procurement process. And then at the end of the procurement, if it's, you know, if it meets that threshold of $50,000 or more, we're bringing it to council for approval. If it's below that, we generally move forward with, with the purchase. Some of the things that we've seen, especially on the purchasing front, is when I first started with fleet, and this is historical, some of the steps that we've taken, is the purchasing would go out for quotes. We got to a point probably last Jan, earlier this year in January, where we were only having probably two vendors submit quotes to us. And so we transitioned to an RFP process and started getting a lot more feedback and a lot more interest in, in what we were looking for. And we also had the benefit of having some local vendors submit bids and were awarded some vehicle purchases. Something else we did in RFP documents is we specifically asked for electric vehicle alternatives and we get some of the feedback on what options were out there and compare them to what the department was looking for. And I'm going to dive down into this fleet rock sizing and sustainability analysis. Those somewhat overlap, but that's really where the meat of our analysis comes into play. This is a little bit of a deeper dive into the acquisition process. How do we acquire fleet assets? If it's a replacement, we have a 15-point system that's based on the mileage and hours of the vehicle or equipment, the maintenance and age. Maintenance is the one that is weighted the most in our analysis because that's where most of our dollars are spent after we purchase the vehicle. Fleet additions are those that are approved through the annual budget process. Those are new additions to the fleet for additional services or additional staffing. And then we also have vehicle accidents. How we, what work through that process is we term, determine what level of insurance coverage that vehicle has and what level of department funding that might be available to replace that and work with departments to replace vehicles as needed. This chart on the slide is probably a couple weeks old, but that gives you some idea of kind of where we stand with what we've ordered over the last three fiscal years and what we're waiting on. And if you recall, earlier this year, we talked a lot about the police intercepted utility vehicles and we had about 60 of those on order. And that's the bulk of these. There's still a handful of vehicles that we have on order that haven't made it in for a number of supply chain or manufacturer issues, but this is where we stand. We've, we've pretty much got all of fiscal year 2022, got about half of fiscal year 23, and of course fiscal year 2024, we're still waiting on a number of vehicles. Fleet rock sizing, I want to talk about that, and I've got an example to share with you. But that's a, a lot of these are multi-sequential step processes. We start with a vehicle equipment request from the department and we look at it if it's a replacement addition, what type of asset they're requesting and fuel type. We'll look at the duty cycle, we'll consider deployment, load requirements, maintenance requirements. Load would be what, how much should that vehicle have to tow? How much does it need to carry? Deployment, is it going to be in an off-road environment? Does it need four-wheel drive? Those kinds of things. We'll do, will you, yes?
It was me.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you go back one slide, please? So can you talk to me about this pending delivery? Because I mean, it's, that's a lot, it seems. And, you know, I know that we've got some things that are holding in, in budget years and fiscal years and things. And I know that we all think that, you know, if I, if I want to order something, I get it, right? But apparently that's not the case, that we're still waiting on stuff from '22. Can we talk about that a minute?
Yes, ma'am. I, I can tell you that there, there are some of these are specialty vehicles. We've, I'll give you an example. We've got three fire brush trucks that we've been waiting on probably since last year that, they're sitting in Alvarado, Texas right now, but there are some components to the vehicle that have not been received by the outfitter. And so we're waiting on that. There's, that's a supply chain. On the police intercepted utility vehicles, that's the bulk of these. They are either in the process of being manufactured or they will be manufactured later this year. We've already started receiving some of those. We've got 19 brand-new PIUs on the street, but we still have more that are coming in. But it really depends on what the manufacturer's able to do in terms of manufacturing and it's not always the vehicle, it may be the outfitter.
Upfitter.
Yeah, there's, there's upfits for service bodies or light systems, things like that that may also be a bottleneck that, that slows us down.
Because I know that it, it's not something that you think about how all the things that are required for, especially our service vehicles.
Yes, ma'am.
But I was, I was wondering if that's what was the delay?
It's really, it's a combination of both. I think right now we're seeing, especially on the police vehicles, it's going to be on the manufacturing side as well as the outfit side because there's a handful of outfitters in the state of Texas and there's, you know, a number of agencies, municipalities, state.
54 counties is all.
But something, and this, this kind of gets into a little bit later in the presentation, but we've had some conversations with fiscal services and some of the departments because especially on larger vehicles, there may be a 600-day delivery timeframe. So there's a question of if you know you need it in a couple of years, can you start now planning for that acquisition and?
600 day?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That, that would be like a paint striper, that would be vac trucks, things like that, but like specialized equipment?
Well, I mean, but those kinds of things, I guess that because of, you know, by virtue of the, the vehicle, you kind of know what their lifespan is. And I mean, you can plan accordingly in that way. Especially if you know the lead time is, you know, I would hate for, I mean, can we fix it if it breaks?
We, and I go back to, well, yeah, I go back to my, to our fleet staff, they've done an outstanding job of keeping things on the road, keeping things in, in a usable condition. But from that planning perspective, that's absolutely a critical consideration is if we know that we need something in the next two or three fiscal years, what do we need to do today to try to start that acquisition process? What does it need to look like through the budget process? Can we go ahead and budget for it, order it so that we know it'll be here in two years? So we're having those conversations about how that looks on the budgeting front, how that looks on the acquisition front. So that's absolutely something that's critical. And I appreciate what you're pointing out. That's absolutely critical that we look at that.
Wow, shout out to the service team. Thank you.
You bet. All right. But going back to fleet rock sizing, when we look at the, you know, based on the duty cycle, we look at the specifications that we need to look for in that vehicle. And that could include the drivetrain, does it need to be a four-wheel drive? What kind of performance specs does it need to have in terms of load and towing capabilities? Does it need to be a certain weight? Bucket trucks are a great example, that you need a heavier vehicle, especially when you're lifting something up, a person to do some work and you want to make sure that low center of gravity is there to make sure that truck's, that truck is stable. And then if it has an auxiliary PTO unit for some type of service body. On the sustainability front, I'll talk about that in the next slide, but we do have some tools that we use to look at, especially when it comes to electric vehicles. There's the Climate Marriage Purchasing Collaborative has a modeling tool that helps us look for options when it comes to EVs in the medium duty, light duty and a heavy duty vehicle market. So we can run what our replacement looks like in that model and come up with some options of things that we might be able to purchase that are available on the market. I put this lawnmower up here, and I don't know if y'all remember this or not, but last November, we worked with Parks and Rec pretty extensively to look at a lawnmower purchased for Cottonwood Creek Golf Course. And this represented about, I'd say, 45 days worth of work, going back and forth between multiple vendors, doing a cost analysis of fiscal services to land on. This is a fuel-powered mower, but there was an electric option that had comparable cutting ranges, but didn't, the cost of, the cost of ownership just outweighed the, the electric over the, over the fuel model, so that's where we ended up, ended up buying. But there's a lot of work that can go into looking at different options in terms of vehicles and doing the analysis to come to a recommendation. This is what our sustainability analysis looks like. We've got kind of another process here. Once we settle on a vehicle, is it available? Is it in production? Is it available in Waco? Is the vehicle reliable? Is the manufacturer reliable? When it comes to service, can we get warranty repair work completed? Is there shop maintenance supports for our staff? Cost of ownership comes into play. Infrastructure, what type of infrastructure is needed for electric vehicles? And there's some other categories beneath that. When it comes to EVs especially, when you look at the European and Asian markets, there's a lot of EV equipment and EV vehicles out there. But the reason being is that the regulatory environment is a lot different. There's a lot more stringent CO2 emission limitations. There's a number of financial incentives that are available in European countries. Fuel cost is higher in those nations, so electric is more attractive in those situations. And there's a more robust urban infrastructure in those foreign nations where these markets are as compared to the United States. We use on the cost of ownership, we use a number of Department of Energy models that help compare the lifespan and use of electric vehicles to fuel, and we can come up with some cost numbers on that front. And then the infrastructure planning, we work with facilities pretty closely to look at where we can locate chargers for electric vehicles. And we also work with Encore really closely on the timeframe needed for transformers. That was one of the biggest issues we dealt with when we were trying to, you know, when we tried to add charging infrastructure, what we need to improve on the, on our wholesale side with Encore and the timeframe. At one point to get a new transformer was 12 months, it's down to four to six months. So we're in constant contact with them on that front. I'm going to go through a couple of slides here where there's, there's several numbers. And so I know there may be some questions, and if we can't get to them today, we certainly will follow up to them. But historically, our, our purchasing, our expenditures for funding for general fund replacements has been right at $1.5 million. Police Department gets about $2 million annually. And then enterprise fund replacements and then the additions, that varies from year to year. In fiscal year 2024, we had replacements of 5.4 million across all departments and additions of 2 million for a total of 7.4 million. I've talked a little bit about the procurement options earlier, but that, that really is important. Like I said, when we started going through the RFP process, we started getting more feedback from vendors and had opportunities to look at more models than we had historically. Something else we did through the purchasing process in the last two RFPs, we did, we reached out to 12 different EV companies that manufacture electric vehicles. And we had very limited response. Most of it, we had three different companies that said that they'd like to submit a bid, but they just weren't in a position to do so. But we were going to continue to push that. You know, if we find opportunities for EVs, we're going to continue to reach out to those companies and tell them about our bid opportunities. And then as far as the monies that are available, we do prioritize with departments, meet with them, and we always have more replacements needed than we have funding for. And so we prioritize our replacements with the various departments throughout the city. This was expenditure planning for fiscal year 2025. I know that there were some, you know, we didn't get funding because of some of the budget issues, but this was an analysis that we, we ran before the fiscal year. And this is a breakdown by department of general fund, police and fire of, these are total vehicles that would need to be replaced and the acquisition cost. And then we added 15% and 20% to those to get to what we think would be today's numbers. Again, we don't replace this much each year because of our budget limitations, but we do prioritize what we can within the department. But this is an example of what we've historically had funding for, but we are working with the fiscal services team and CMO's office to look at ways to enhance funding for these purchases. And that would include things like some strategic and long-range planning, like Chief Walker mentioned earlier in his presentation. He's provided us his 15-year, our 50-year plan. What we're doing now is trying to put some numbers to that. And my long-term goal is to take at least all the major departments and look at what type of expenses would be for big-ticket items like in solid waste, water utilities and public works. Some of the other things that we're doing with fiscal services is working with them to look at, are there ways we can roll over residual funds from the current fiscal year and maintain that? And also, I mentioned that surplus asset auction revenues that we received over the last couple of years, are there ways we can take that funding and use that to help us with replacement vehicles or acquisitions to, I won't call it self-fund our department, but add to the funding that's available, that's not from the, the budget directly. As far as procurement options and strategy, we've talked about that. We've looked at historical trends on how we've acquired vehicles and what the prices, the pricing is, the coordination across departments, and then the data and analysis to start looking at how we compare to other cities in terms of, you know, the number of equipment in our water utilities office per linear feet of pipe and, and doing some benchmarking and so forth. I'm going to go into alternative fuel vehicles now. We currently have 25 EVs and 43 hybrid vehicles in the fleet for a total of 68. And you can see the percent breakdown of EVs compared to our total rolling stock. It's 3.2% for EVs, 5.5% for hybrids and 8.7% for alternative fuel vehicles. I did add in the vehicle registrations for Texas and McLennan County to show how that adoption rate looks like. And our, for the city, we're ahead of where Texas is and ahead of where McLennan County, as you can see the breakdown there of the number of vehicles registered compared to the number of EVs registered. It does not include the hybrids, I couldn't find the data on that, but it does include the EVs. These are some examples of some of the EVs that we've looked at and some that we have in our fleet. We've got a Mach-E Ford Mustang police vehicle that we're about to roll out into our patrol fleet. We already have one that a commander is using. There's a Ford Lightning truck that we just received about two weeks ago for the beautification team. I think y'all remember the photo shoot here a few months ago at the convention center.
I don't think, I don't think we'll ever forget it.
Never forget that.
Just waving bubbles in the air in front of the EV fleet.
I did notice that, you know, there's a couple of council members that don't have their bubbles out yet, so.
We might need to run it back.
So I don't have it listed in my slide, but in Waco, as of October 2024, there, in total, there are 569 EVs registered in Waco. Again, I, I was trying to find the total number of registered vehicles in Waco, I couldn't find that. But this data comes from the North Central Texas Council of Governments Clean Cities Initiative. We did have, in fiscal year 2023, had a total of 17 EVs. In fiscal year 2024, we added eight more, so we had a 47% increase just in our EV fleet from 17 to 25 vehicles. We've also done a number of demonstration events with vendors, and I've got a video I'm going to show you just in a moment, but we've worked with Romco and Volvo to look at a fully-powered 23-ton electric excavator. We also brought in Battle Motors, we had a 13, a 13-yard fully-electric refuse truck. And we're talking with a lot of these companies about opportunities to do some extended demo. We bring them in and say, do a wet demo of a refuse truck for 30 days. And so we did have a little hitch in terms of how do we make sure that we have the proper insurance coverage on those vehicles? Worked with our risk management team and have found out that we can move forward with that. But I'm going to show you the excavator video and talk about that. I guess it's not going to work. I'm sorry about that.
Don't give up.
I'm going to try to. It worked, I, I ran it three times at my office and it worked just fine. Now I can't get my mouse to work. There it is. All right. I'm sorry about that. I'm going to talk to you about this, but we had Volvo and Romco come down to our facility out at Monkey Run to do a demo on a fully-electric 23-ton excavator and has comparable torque to a diesel-operated unit. It has about a four to six hour range in terms of, of battery use. And what we did find though, in talking with, you know, with the Volvo and Romco team is that it doesn't need to be charged every night. And so when you get into a deployment scenario with this maybe at a work site, it's not easy to bring it back to its station to get charged. And so if you were to do something in terms of charging, you'd probably need a, you would need a diesel-powered generator to operate this, and that would somewhat offset any of your sustainability savings and fuel savings with respect to running electric equipment. So we're still investigating it, we're still looking, we've got several others, but we're moving in that direction.
I'll say the video looked like it was going to be really cool.
It is a cool video, and if I, if there's a way, we can try to get it to you, but it, it showed it digging and some of, some of the aggregate that was out there. It's, it was a cool event and we appreciate Volvo and Romco coming down and talking to us.
But it's not making, not making enough noise, though, right?
It doesn't make, that, that is one of the things, I mean, when you get into electric vehicles, electric equipment, it doesn't make noise, or there, there's definitely a safety element there. And I'm sorry it didn't work like I thought it would, so I apologize for that. I'm going to talk about fuel services.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
On, on this, most of the vehicles that we acquire are, including EV or carbon-based or whatever we call it, are purchases, right? And then we're, we either have service contracts for those or we maintain them ourselves. Is that fair to say?
For most of the vehicles themselves, what we'll do, the, the general maintenance on them, oil changes. For most of the vehicles themselves, what we'll do, the, the general maintenance on them, oil changes, you know, things like that. On the equipment, we do have service agreements. A lot of our landfill equipment has service agreements with Caterpillar and RDO equipment where they have service technicians come out. Some of that technology in those vehicles is proprietary, and so you have to have the software and the tools and things to actually come out and work on them. Again, our staff and, and others, you know, in the city, the solid waste team, they can do some basic things, oil changes and things like that. When it comes to actual repair or, you know, trying to work through those systems, there are some service contracts that we do have.
Given the kind of complexity of it, or just the specialized or proprietary nature of some of that equipment. But with, with like, let's say just like sedans purchased in the fleet or in our fleet, those typically are not like leased from a dealership, right? Those are just, they belong to the city going forward.
Yes, sir, one, they, these vehicles are purchased and they are ours.
Are there, are, is there a school of thought about leasing? Or do you feel like no acquisition is probably the better value?
That, that, it's not part of my presentation, but we have talked with several leasing companies about that and we're reviewing that. I know police does lease some vehicles for their detectives and so forth. I would think that the leasing, we've actually had several conversations about that internally, about where would that fit the best?
Of which vehicles would be appropriate for that?
Yes, sir, there may, some of the smaller departments, there may be a good fit. I would use the, the city manager's office as an example. We've had, you know, we've thought about what would it look like to have a vehicle for the CMO office if they need to go on a trip, you know, go out to the airport, things like that. Would it be smart to lease something, to buy something? Same thing for, you know, say the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame, though. That's something we're looking at, I don't have a good answer for you. It's just that we've talked with, I think, three different leasing, D and M leasing, enterprise and a couple of other smaller outfits about that. And it's definitely an option that if we want to go that route, we can certainly, certainly look at that.
Serious, thanks so much, appreciate you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'll talk about fuel services. I'm not going to dive into a lot of data right now. We're, we're doing a pretty deep dive into our fuel use and some of the historical trends. So there's more to come on that. But we are looking at cost per mile, miles per gallon, gallons per vehicle, and then used by department and class. But did want to talk a little bit about, you know, our fuel procurement. We do go, or we have historically gone through a request for bid process for that. And it's competitive process. We're in, we had a initial 24-month term for our fuel service contracts that began in 2021 with three optional one-year renewals. The first option period began in 2023, the second in 2024, and we'll be bringing the third option renewal back in 2025 next year. The pricing is a wholesale price with a delivery fee associated with it. And the two companies that we use are Fox Wholesale for diesel and die-diesel and Petroleum Traders Corporation for unleaded fuel. We're also working with facilities team to start tracking our electric vehicle electricity usage to quantify that. That is another fuel source, but we haven't had the infrastructure in place to track that. We do now with some of the smart chargers that facilities put in place. We have fuel management software that we utilize to manage our fuel system. And then we do routine system inspections and subsurface pressure line testing on our fuel system, given its proximity to the water treatment plant by Fleet Services, so we track that pretty closely. This is a breakdown of rolling stock unleaded and diesel units by fiscal year. And the ones that have documented fuel use, you can see that we're growing over time as we've increased the number of unleaded units over the last few years and the number of diesel units and the total number of units that we're growing with. I wanted to point out that in our total rolling stock, we, we show 782 vehicles. And in this report, we show 708 total units. There is a delta there with the newer vehicles that we received that didn't have any fuel usage for fiscal year 24 that we're still waiting on that final outfit, say decals or computers or things like that. And there are some vehicles in the fleet that don't show any documented fuel use. They may be special purpose vehicles that we don't use very often. An example would be there's an old armored car that PD has, it's a 1982 Bearcat that sees very limited use. And so there's really not a lot of fuel use on that. But that does beg the question that if we do identify vehicles in the fleet that don't have fuel use and are underutilized, you know, do we need those? And so we'll be carrying forward conversations with the departments to say, you know, you identified this vehicle, do you still need it? And if you need it, do we need a priority for replacement? So driving into more data. This is something that I, I really credit our supervisor and fleet manager for, for putting this together. This was something that predates me a little bit, but kind of aligns with the time when I came in on board on Fleet Services. But we see some pretty positive trends on our preventative maintenance schedule. And we isolated the, the bulk of the fleet that's our, say our smaller light duty type vehicles. And you can see the number of hours across the last three fiscal years that we're spending on PMs are decreasing. And a PMA, we've got a number of preventative maintenance schedules, but a PMA preventative maintenance, say, is basically an oil change and inspection. There are other inspections that we have, but this is, this is kind of a baseline that every vehicle gets. We're reducing that, that, the number of hours per PM. And we think that's a combination of two things. One is we're keeping, we're having, we're maintaining our data better and two, our people are getting better. If you look at the PMAs completed and the labor costs over that same time, you can see that there have been more PMs completed over that timeframe. And you can see the labor cost. I think in FY 2022, I think there were more PMs completed than we captured, but you can see that we've made some improvements in that timeframe and capturing that data over 2023 and 2024. So, I mean, what we see in terms of trends is, you know, our average PMA completion times are decreasing by class and our average labor costs are decreasing, which I think are both positive trends. This was a business case that we really looked at when I, once I got into fleet. Police Patrol Preventative Maintenance. We started this partnership with the police department in September 2023. The goal was to improve police vehicle on-time PM completion timeframe. And what it really resulted in is us having routine communication and scheduling with the police department. It sounds simple, but we, we instituted things such as letting police department staff drop vehicles off after hours, have a drop box for keys, and they could pick up vehicles after hours. So they didn't have to wait for us during normal business hours from eight to five. What you'll see is over this last year, we've had a, some success by increasing our completion timeframe for the police patrol vehicles by about 10 and a half percent. We expect to improve that over this next fiscal year by looking at some of the support vehicles and doing the same thing with those. But this, like I said, this was generally just based on communication and scheduling. And so I think we had a good, good outcome with this. Fleet availability, this is, you know, probably the, the main KPI or metric that we would utilize to look at, you know, how good we're doing. There's a couple of targets on this chart. There's a industry target of 95%. And I've talked with some of the folks that have actually created this benchmark from the American Public Works Association. And that target is kind of an ideal target of, that you have your fully staffed all the time, they have multiple years of experience, they have all the training they need, there's no major supply chain issues, there's no major disruptions in service. So that's probably the ideal situation. The 90% benchmark target is more realistic, talking with a number of fleet managers from Texas, Missouri and Minnesota. This does take into account some variations in staffing, you know, some things that, you know, there are sometimes, you know, supply chain issues, disruptions from weather events, things like that. But this really is a more reasonable target. So there, I think there's some room for improvement. We're hitting, you know, this past year, we hit 82% fleet availability. But like I said, I think overall that we're, we're doing a pretty decent job. I think more communication with other departments and some of the scheduling and things like that may improve this number as well. Fleet accomplishments, we talked about the police patrol vehicle change order we brought to you in February. Mayor, I know you've asked about this several times, I think in the past, our Faster Web Fleet Asset Management Software. We're in the middle of implementing that. We completed the installation earlier this fall and we started implementing that. We're going to continue with our data and analytics. Industry partnerships, we've actually, excuse me, we've actually developed several with American Public Works Association, Fleet Pros of Texas. We've got folks that serve on the Texas State Technical College Automotive Program Advisory Board. And EVs, you know, helped TSDC develop some of their EV safety training for vehicle repairs. We're going to continue our resiliency planning and support on our backup generators and our fuel systems. As far as work plan goes, we're going to continue to implement our Faster Web this fiscal year, refine our key performance measures, continue with our internal department coordination. Like I mentioned earlier, we've had some conversations with Chief Walker and Fire Department about long-range planning. We'll continue doing that with other departments. Peer City Operations Benchmarking, we've had conversations with a number of those, including peer cities like Wichita Falls, Temple, San Angelo and others. And vendor and industry opportunities, we'll continue working through those. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any comments or questions for Trey?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So first, thanks for your efforts to, to implement purchase of electric, electric vehicles where it makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Leading the, I mean, we're ahead of the state and the, and the county. And I don't, this isn't a very specific question, but I'm just trying to get a sense of, when you're looking at those, obviously, like if you're buying your first one, you have to have a, you have to have a charger for it. Is there any way of predicting, like, where you achieve critical mass where it makes it easier to buy more because you've already got the infrastructure?
I think there's an answer to that question. I think part of it goes into that planning. Yeah, I'll back up and I'm going to try to answer the question. It's not just buying an electric vehicle, like you said, there's a, there's a charger and infrastructure component. But then you have to back up from that is, do you have the electric power capability at a particular location? And facility, I'll give credit to facilities, they looked at all the major departments and all the major facilities it had and where, where would it be smart to put additional chargers? And they've got a roadmap for that, it's a matter of implementing that. But you're right, as far as the acquisition goes, it depends on the business case and the use. I think there's a lot of opportunity in your sedans, your light duty trucks, things like that. If, you know, code enforcement, inspections, those types of folks, where they're not really carrying a load, we're going to continue looking at that. And that goes back to that, that DRVE model that the Mayor's Climate Collaborative, we can plug in what a replacement would look like and it can output where you might could purchase an EV vehicle. Then we get into the planning of, okay, where are we going to charge it? We had, we actually had that discussion with Clint and the Development Services team. They, we actually got, I think, two or four more vehicles for them, they're all EVs this year, but they're at the parking garage over in downtown and we can't put any more EVs in that. We have to put them, you know, stage them where they can go up to the charger. So there is some coordination and logistics that you have to go through with that. But there is a lot of, you know, I didn't touch on it in this, but there's a lot of behind-the-scenes planning and discussions going on with other departments. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, it was a pretty vague question, but I was just trying to get a sense of it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
Just a comment that, you know, you, you guys have your, have your fingers in a lot and, and there's a lot of strategy that goes into this long-term planning. As you noted, you know, these, it's not, unfortunately, it's not like I have the money and I want to buy a car, let's get one. You know, there's typically a pretty long lead time on these. So I'm really appreciative of your team, you and your team's ability to forecast and then have foresight into what our needs will be in five, 10, 15 years and get that in front of us so that we can move forward and make sure that we maintain our fleet. And, and like with, you know, many municipalities across the city or across the state, we could stand to, to improve the, the quality and age of our fleet. But I, I, I trust that you are the, you and your team are the right folks to, to make sure that you're guiding us in the right direction on that. So I really appreciate your, your work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, Trey, I appreciate you coming in because this, three or four, when did you start, a couple of years ago?
This, I'm coming up on my second anniversary in Fleet.
I know that when I first got on council, some of us had known for a while that there was, it was sort of cloudy whenever we asked about our rolling stock. Because it crosses over all these different enterprise funds and the general fund and the police and the fire and the water and the trash. So there wasn't sort of a unified analysis of what we were doing. And I, I appreciate you tackling. This is kind of an omnibus issue and the data here is fantastic. Great breakdown, 782, we know that's a question asked several years ago, now another 782 vehicles. The acquisition process is very well laid out. I like that, as George said a little bit ago, or as, as Councilmember Chase said a little bit ago, on the EVs, kind of, we don't, we have a good acquisition process for evaluating those. And the fact that we are, the city of Waco has six times the county average of EVs on the roads, I think is a nice metric I'm going to start using. For, you know, selectively, maybe. Anyway, the other thing, and I, and Mayor Portem Ewing kind of touched on it. If we can get the data down to, it looks like you have all the parts here, where we can get estimated remaining useful life and have this predictive of, you know, this, the fire truck's going to last seven more years. But in seven more years, we have a million dollar, you know, expense coming up. So we have some sort of a model that shows what our rolling stock expense is projected to be. I think you have all the data here, so just really cool putting all this together. That's all I've got. Anybody else have any questions for Trey? Trey, great job, great presentation.
Appreciate you, thank you all very much.
Deputy City Manager Emerson will introduce the next speaker.
All right, thank you, Trey. And next we will have Tom Bock, Director of Strategic Initiatives. As you all recall, we committed to providing frequent updates on the downtown redevelopment project. And so today, Tom is here to provide an update on the progress since council adopted the strategic roadmap in June 2024 and authorized Phase 1A Design Services in July 2024, including a look at public communication and engagement efforts, form-based code development, design and permitting progress and next steps.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to attempt today to do the unprecedented for myself. I'm going to try really hard to be brief. I know I've had each of you in various rooms talking about this project a lot. And I don't want to bury the lead because the main thing about tonight's presentation is we have some really exciting design updates that we, we want to hear your feedback on. I'm going to go ahead and do the shout-out upfront. Tonight, I have the good fortune to be joined by a lot of the design team and we're from all over. So we've got members of the MVVA team out of New York and elsewhere, we've got Hunt Development Group, we've got Jacob Bell from Walker Partners, which is a, a key piece of this as well. But they're here for a reason, there's a theme to all of this. Our attempt at outreach engagement is, this project is feedback-driven. And so we're, we're at a very helpful milestone right now. And so trying to get that feedback, not just from y'all, but through the, through the community as well. So without further ado, I'm going to move and move quickly. And I'm going to try to anticipate what you've seen and heard before, but please stop me at any point that, that we need to linger. As, as Deputy City Manager Emerson stated, we committed at the outset of this project to have an anticipated rhythm that you guys can follow and know and count on. And so every other month, we're here, just like we were in September. That two months has been very productive and we've reached some great milestones and had some great project, pro, progress. So our website, we launched that, I mentioned that the last time we spoke. And through October 31st, we've got great evidence that it's doing its thing. It's reaching people, we've had 1,200 users. We've got 700 people at least that spent a lot of time on the website with us. And then 130 people like me who did the deep dive, downloaded the documents and got into it. So that's, that's incredible, that exceeded expectations there. In-person outreach and engagement, you can't put a premium on that. We, we've really made the effort to be everywhere, including importantly, there's that centennial event at St. Francis Church. The community came out, the mayor knows he was there, but the project team was there too, engaging with people who were primed to share their stories about why this part of downtown is so meaningful to them and so real to them still. And so that, that was crucial, helpful information to guide this project. We've had the form-based code steering panel, several standalone public info sessions and stakeholder outreach. We've got more to come, I don't want to miss the opportunity to plug right here. As successful as that centennial event was, we realized that the next place that we need to be, we know, we know we need to coincide with and have a presence at is Winter Wonderland. So I'm going to be that nerd who's in a booth there while everybody else is having fun. I'm going to say, hey, come over here, talk to me about that downtown project. We're going to have actually two touches. So the, the night of the tree lighting, we're going to reserve space at the chamber so that we can offer the same team to come in and give a design touch opportunity. People, if they have any questions, we can accommodate that and do the deep dive in the model and get, get feedback right there.
Just make sure you have a flashing Santa hat.
A flashing what?
Flashing Santa hat or elf hat or something.
Costumes aren't my thing, come on. Your, your wish is my command, I, I will do it.
Tom, we're also looking forward to your nerd in a booth podcast that's coming out.
This is the second time this week podcast has come up. To offer a progress update on a very important piece of this effort, in parallel to the design progress, we've got a form-based code effort, which is really about creating better, more purpose-built zoning and development tools that are graphic in nature. So that form-based mean- So that form-based mean, what does it means, what does it look and feel like? And that is the highest bar that our community has set for us to say, help show us that the final outcomes here aren't just going to be pretty renderings on the front end in some sort of medium in, in real life. We need to define the look and feel in writing and in drawings so that the private development community can come alongside us and build that out for the community. So this, this exciting tool, we're, we're well underway, we're in the assessment phase and we expect that that assessment report will be published on the website by the end of the year. We have a stakeholder, or I'm sorry, a steering panel that's set up meeting with us on at least a bimonthly basis as well to, they voluntarily agreed to do some of the homework with us. So we do the wide open public info sessions, but we're going through pretty exhaustive drafting and revision phases. So great team working with us, can't say thank you enough. That publication date for the first assessment draft is again, by the end of the year. We'll move into recommendations about new ordinances in, in the early part of 2025. And ultimately, we anticipate completing this form-based code process to present back to you within a year. So trying to keep that moving along and we are on schedule. Phase 1A Design, this is, this is a snapshot from the last presentation, just to be oriented. What is it about? What are we working on? It's the first of four phases. It's right there downtown at the river between Jefferson and Washington, Fourth and the River. This section is about 33 acres in total. Corresponds with that Barron's Branch district that's so important for a lot of reasons. The, the images here kind of summarize it well. There's a floodplain component that's inescapable. We've got to deal with about 16 acres of floodplain by bringing that underground. That's also an opportunity to draw in the distinct beautiful character of Cameron Park into our downtown. Also to honor the work that went into the downtown improvement, implementation plan that defined our streets and utility needs. Forty-four percent of this phase is about that. But the cultural history layer is one of the most exciting pieces because we have such a storied history of the Caidos neighborhood, of the community that lived here and remembers it still. And there's fragments of it that are still right under our feet. So La Pila is there in the image as a, as a great example of that. How do we bring back these elements that not only are treasured landmarks of the past, but still have extreme value to our future for organizing the lifeblood of our community? So there's a few of these key things, which I'll show you some much bigger, much better images of and even in animation in just a moment. But one of the other important pieces of this puzzle is by resolving the floodplain utilities, streets and all these other elements, the enabling infrastructure, it opens up for development nine to 11 private development sites that help bring tax revenues back to the city to help fund the balance of the project. So that's really the full picture there. We're about 33% of the way into the, we're probably more than that. But the first third of the design process is behind us now. We've achieved schematic design on schedule. That review process has gone through our staff already. We're still sharing the renderings with the community and y'all for feedback because this next three-month period, we still have that opportunity to make significant changes if needed. And so we want to have a really solid footing by the time we get to that construction documents phase to, to lock in and get permitted. So the permitting process, some of that, the floodplain permitting will begin in January, but everything else is tracking towards that permitting, design and bidding in the May timeframe. So here are the exciting images. And again, I can't emphasize enough that I, I, I put a, a high, a, a difficult challenge out there for the group because it's one thing to achieve schematic design by the end of October. That's like 400 engineering sheets of drawings. What I needed to bring y'all was good content that we can discuss in an engaging way, and that's renderings. So this is a pretty tight turnaround for them to get this together, but I think we've hit the mark in terms of great discussion documents. So here's that overview, the bottom of the page is Fourth Street, top of the page obviously is the river. Left to right, we've got Jefferson and Washington. Those are the bookends of the projects. But you see the green, that, that represents all the space that we're going to be touching for public improvements, public plazas, public parks, but also some key infrastructure upgrades, including streetscapes. I'm going to use this drawing to illustrate a couple of key views that you'll see in a moment. The first one will be an overview of this creek corridor. And the second one will really be an animation going through the middle of the site for that Caidos connection. What does that look like and what does that do for organizing the space? So that first overview, this is looking upstream on Barron's Branch. And we no longer are just talking about white boxes. This helps illustrate what is the development potential that wants to be close to this green infrastructure that we're talking about, these park spaces and these, these creek elements. And the, the, the massing is amazing. It, it draws a closeness that has a lot of potential for residential, office, retail. And again, holding firm to that commitment at ground story, everything needs to be activated to spill over into these public spaces and to the streets as well. The, the Caidos element is just off to the page to the left, cutting through, continuing across that bridge to the right. And here's Caidos, starting from kind of the Washington side. We've got an animation here that, that brings that to life for us.
Wow. Is that what it used to look like else?
Not quite. It was all businesses and the big, that the former, the most released the hall.
Sounds so cool.
I talked to Tom about that last week.
So as, as we wander through, you see that there, there's the business activation. There's intended, this is intended to be a very flexible use pavilion so that it's, it's mind, it's mindful of performance potential. We want to activate it, but it also needs to be very functional when there is no performance going on. Looking for a light but functional bridge connection to cross over the, the creek in a very dynamic and sculptural way. But then continuing to Jefferson, past additional businesses, crossing at probably a raised crossing here to slow traffic and then entering into the La Pila Plaza. And we'll see a view that, and you can see the development just past the plaza as well. Everything spilling onto this is, to, to help activate it. And we'll rest here in just a moment. There's, there's a recreation of the fountain. And a view back to the church. So activating this alignment in a way that, that hasn't ever been done before, but feels very appropriate for, for the, the space that we have. So this, this market plaza would be a great addition, some, some elements that would be welcome just to the left as well. There's parallel parking along Jefferson throughout this entire plaza alignment. So lending itself easily to day-to-day activation with food trucks and, and, and occasional activities like that as well. Just, and you can imagine the farmer's market easily, those type of elements, but also the church itself. One of the stories we heard through being at the festival is that these festivals happen more than, you know, they happen annually. Certainly the anniversary celebrations, but there are parties that happen much more frequently than that. And, and this type of plaza would be very well suited to supporting that type of activity. So going back to the center where everything kind of intersected, here's that creek. Here's that bridge crossing for the Caidos pedestrian plaza. And you see all the elements kind of coming together here. It's that intersection, not only of our culture, our history, but also like that timelessness of the, the natural quality of perhaps what Barron's Branch was once upon a time before anyone settled in Waco. So that's one of the neat dimensions of placemaking is that you curate, you curate from elements that touch many different time scales. And, and this feels like a good homage to bringing in the best of, of Cameron Park into this central location. Water play is a key element of that. There's been a lot of thought put into how to capture the idea of the centrality of springs to the settlement of this community, the, the importance of the limestone, but also doing that in an artful and playful way that can also serve as an anchor for those initial views coming down the, the Caidos Plaza from, from the convention center, from Washington, eventually from the town square. It's all going to connect, what are you looking at? And similarly, as you wind the bend and bend and get aligned with the bridge, where are you looking at beyond the bridge? It's the stadium. So views are very intentionally considered here, but also the functionality of spaces. Here's another view of the pavilion and, and trying to understand what sort of terracing is going to accommodate both, you know, event capacity, but also just lunch. You know, we're going to have potentially a lot of new office workers in this area or folks living nearby that need a place to pop out and have a luncheon in the outside air. Another element to this, like one of the key pieces that ties the whole district together is the water. So we saw the fountain, but also thinking about as, as the Barron's Branch Creek moves through this space, what's happening at the end of the development area? And kind of, this illustrates also where that box culvert element will be, pulling it back from university parks, but tying it in with right at that interface is where there'd be a cascade of the water coming down some rapids that hopefully navigates us so that even as the Brazos fluctuates up and down, the water body itself in this heavy investment area is not going to be inundated with silty water on a frequent basis. So we've, we've learned a lot from our efforts on projects downstream and we've tried to bake in as much of that wisdom as possible. The other thing notable about this image is to say the bridges at university parks. So in the strategic roadmap, a lot of contemplation was going into, hey, does this, does this thoroughfare close to vehicular traffic for event usage, et cetera? We, we've landed on a more flexible model. It, it gives it a diet, it brings it down to two lanes instead of four. It makes full use of one of those existing bridges and converts the other to, it becomes a, a river view deck with the, with the bike path behind it. So that way, we're keeping those investments intact, we're leveraging them for good use. It actually did also make sense to keep the vehic, the vehicle traffic, not just in the first 15 years of this, but probably throughout the life of this, this will make sense. We've got flexibility to close it for events, but keep it open the rest of the time. And then the last thing I'll say is if you go to the upstream extreme end of this development, where does the water start? It kind of starts in a calm and quiet place called the Spring Cove, where the pumps will bubble water out of the ground and you'll have that kind of quieter shady grove experience. So with that, those are, those are the exciting image updates. And just to recap, like we're still on track, we've passed that first milestone, we're moving through the second milestone. But essentially, that, that's the update. And I'm happy to take any feedback, reactions or questions you may have about what we've seen today.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
I'm excited about this guys. Florida Casey Park and this area here, since as long as I've been on the council. And that's been a little while. This is the first time we've ever honored our Hispanic heritage in our culture to this point. I just wanted to tell you, Tom, I don't know if I told you at that last meeting, there used to be a small waterfall on the Brazos River, right there on Jefferson, because the folks that lived in that housing, the, the project that I told you was right there about crossing La Pila. That's where people would go down into the Brazos and take their showers there because that housing projects did not have running water. So everybody would go down to the waterfall and take a shower. A shower there because they had time for the men and time for the women. But my understanding from my aunt that lived there is what they used to do. I meant to tell you, I meant to tell you last week when we met about that other waterfall, which is right across from La Pila and across from the housing project on Jefferson. But I'm excited about this. However, it turns out it can't be anything but good, anything but good. So thank you for, for your work, Tom, for Bradley and his staff and this council for being supportive of this move. I think it's going to be so good for Waco.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Tom, thanks so much. Form-based code, I like the sound of it. I don't really know that I understand it. Is that part of a much bigger discussion or?
Definitely.
Could you give me an example of like, how will this, something that will move faster and more efficiently?
So in its, in its essence is really, think, think about other cities. And a, a great example of another city that's done it is Santa Fe. So Clarion, same consultant that we've got on this project. They've worked in that community to understand what is precious and important about their history, culture and existing architecture to create some preservation tools. But also like what are those defining character aesthetic elements? The relationship to the street, like distances, setbacks. But also recognizing that this is the fundamental about it is that it's one thing if you know what you want and you write copious amounts of legislative language about it. But if you can't show it, you're leaving the door open to either misapplication by our administration or misinterpretation by the development community. And notably, if there's any confusion in the development community at all, that's risk that has a monetary cost. If, if there's a chance that I turn in a set of plans, not knowing for sure that it meets the requirements, then there's a good chance that it's going to come back to me with a long list of corrections to make. And that additional time is going to cost me money as a developer. So that, that's really the efficiency we're trying to optimize for, make it as easy as possible so that developers have certainty about their ability to comply with our expectations. And so communicating as clearly as possible by supplement, supplementing the very legislative language with really clear diagrammatic illustrations that convey what is precious about the built form downtown that's going to help us achieve a vision like this. So that's it in its simplest terms, I don't know if that helps, but.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Absolutely.
George, I'll give you a little history of Caidos later. It's a little long and we want to eat supper, I know. I'll talk to you during supper about the history.
I look forward to it.
That I remember of the Caidos.
Any other questions for Tom or comments? I'll just, every time you come in, you're Tom, you know, I never get tired of hearing, I think this is the third time this week, it's only Tuesday. So it gets better and better every time. Excited to see this Phase 1A start coming to life, at least through renderings. And I know we've had to kind of squeeze some things around, may not be visible to the untrained eye, but we've, we've moved this thing around just a little bit, which are all positive. These pictures are amazing. And I think ultimately, people are going to forget about the San Antonio River Walk and this is going to be the premier river walk in the world.
Of course it is.
Absolutely. Yeah, exactly, what it used to be. And it really started in 1A was because we're trying to fix a floodplain and a, and a drainage issue and put some park space in, it's sort of a natural outgrowth of fixing that, which is why I like doing this one first, not only for that very practical logic, but also because of the, the things that, that Councilmember Rodriguez mentions about the cultural, cultural heritage here. It's a natural place to, to put this. And I'll just, we talked about Mucholista and Caidos and, and La Pila. And that, and that promenade is going to be just fantastic. One question on the, can you flip back a couple?
Yep.
The, just some of those, yeah, one more. Yeah, this one, one, back one more, I think. The one that's kind of, keep going, that. These are all, I know, so far this 167 has kind of stayed quasi-stable. Do these features, like the, the bridge, some of the terracing, the, the park, the fountains, the cascades, is that all included in our, in our 167 number that we're talking about?
That's one of the key milestones that SD kicked off is a finer tune validation of the budget. But yes, all these elements are understood to fit within, like there's a sub-budget for each of these elements that we're trying to achieve. And so until a finer detailed estimate tells us otherwise, we understand these are on target.
Yeah, sure.
And in part, it's a notable moment to repeat that the bidding strategy for this phase is to lead with utilities and streetscapes to, to help us guard against. If there's a, if there's a cost escalation in utilities and streetscapes, to achieve the total budget, 167 million all in, we will value engineer. And we have a list already of things that we would consider for value engineering from the park scope. But yes, every step of the way, we are validating the budget to make sure we're showing you our latest and best estimate of what we can afford.
And I understand ultimately, we won't know until we actually start opening the bids on this stuff. But so far.
That's right.
So good.
And Tom, although the verticality rendered here past the white box phase, that is.
And Tom, all the verticality rendered here past the white box phase, that is subject for private development, is that my understanding?
That, with the exception of, obviously, the pavilion, the bridge, and just under that Caillados label, there's a building gestured. Restrooms will be considered and figured out in that vicinity as well. Wouldn't necessarily be that full building structure. We see a place for a public hall or something at some point in the future. Phase 1A implementation only contemplates restrooms.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
And just to close, the sweet part of this is going to be the development sites and getting that retail commercial activity going there in this great, in this great site. And I will say that WSD is going to be an important partner in this as we go to next steps. And so far, we've had great meetings, great leadership over there. Dr. Spicer, our new superintendent, has been great to work with. So look forward to moving this thing along. So thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are we going to do another one of these tomorrow?
If you want to. I'll be anywhere you want.
Keep them coming.
Thank you.
All right. Deputy City Manager Emerson, do we, should we go for the last one?
So what we're going to do is, we will hear Clint in the business session and Amanda at another meeting. We'll bump the other two to another time, and then we'll just go ahead and go to exec.
So you do want to do Clint, Matt?
No.
We're just going to, we're going to close her out.
Yeah.
All right? That, okay, I think it makes sense. A little bit of time for exec. All right. With that, we have a couple more things left. Is there any council requests for future agenda items?
Not a future agenda item, but I wanted to know if sustainability could, in light with the EV charger conversation. I know we've talked about it before, but the number of charging stations that we currently have, and what is in play with the incentivized businesses that we have, because I know some of them that are coming online have some requirements with that. And I don't know, I don't remember what that number is.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda items, guys? All right. We'll now recess work session and reconvene regular session for executive session, as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:13.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.
Okay, we'll just see it.